One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No call please, Mr. Toth.
Yes, Mr. Shi.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Here.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Ms. White. Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Sanjana Patel.
Here.
Mr. Lugo. Mr. Ronak Patel.
Here.
Mr. Erica.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Opening statement, please.
Yes. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, public law, 1975 C-231 sunshine law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted in the Board of Education administrative offices and on the Board of Education website. That's good, right? This is actually my singing voice.
It's a radio voice.
Yeah, it's like the Apollo Theater.
Yes, since today we have a combined meeting, so we're going to go to a closed session first. In accordance with the NJSA Section 10, Column 4-12, the Edison Township Board of Education adjourns to confidential sessions for the purpose of discussing the following: confidential personnel on board matters, student matters, pending litigation, legal matters, contracts, property acquisition. And I have a motion to adjourn to previous session.
Motion to.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we probably will be back about what?
About an hour and a half?
About an hour.
Yeah, about an hour and a half, so we should be back before seven o'clock. If we delay, well, we'll come back and let everyone know. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna, excuse me. Please be seated. So let's reconvene to open session. Can I have a motion to reconvene?
Motion.
All right, same time. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so today we have a presentation. Mrs. Goomer. Yeah, take it away. We have a video presentation, right?
Mr. Shi, Dr. Alderelli, Board of Education and community, I'm very pleased to stand up here today and present to you our data for 2425 for NJSLA, DLM access, and for NJGPA. That's the final one. Taking a look at Edison Public Schools at a glance, we can see that our enrollment still increased up to 2324. We're still awaiting for our 2425 numbers, but even last year, we can see that almost a quarter of our population counts as economically disadvantaged. We have almost 6% of our population being English language learners. And our student mobility rate, which is quite shocking, is 13.8% of our population comes in new each year, and 8.6% of them left Edison. Our number of students that were tested actually decreased, which correlates with our decreasing enrollment at the elementary level. Overall, fifth grade has a 70% proficiency rate, and across all grades, there has been a 1.3% increase in meeting or exceeding. We are excited that there has been an increase year over year in our subgroups for races and for program. Specifically for special ed and 504. Considering our data, some needs and next steps include continuing our Lincoln pilot to work with students who need extra help. There is going to continue to be a focus on Tier One instruction, which research shows is most important. There will be an integration of social studies and science content to increase schema and relevance, and we will be evaluating our online programs for mitigation. Moving on to our math, grades three through five. As you can see, the number of students tested also decreased. Our math results show increases from grade three to grade three year over year at 4.8%. Grade four to grade four at 3.2%, and grade five to grade five at 5.9%. There was also an increase in the fourth to fifth grade cohort. Year over year, the growth overall has increased across all racial and gender subgroups, as well as all program subgroups, except for special ed, which is flat. In response to our math data, we are considering math support in upper elementary, focusing on conceptual understanding and problem solving, and we will be evaluating our online programs for mitigation. Moving on to science for grade five, we're happy to report that we had a 5.2 increase from 2324 to 2425, but we still have some ways to go to make sure our students are all proficient before they leave us. We are also happy to report that all of our subgroups, with the exception of one, increased in their proficiency, and the one that did not increase stayed flat. Some work we have to continue to do is to place an emphasis on science as more hands-on learning, create more cross-curricular connections for building schema and relevance, and as part of that, we will be leveraging our Wonder Wednesday initiative. Next up is our WIDA access testing results. This is for kindergarten through 12th grade students who have been identified as multilingual learners. It does monitor students' progress in learning social and academic English and is mired in the WIDA English Language Development Standards. It assesses four language domains. Each ML will be assessed annually until a minimum cutoff score of 4.5 has been achieved, along with other exiting criteria. In Edison, we exceeded the goal of the number of students reaching the 4.5 cutoff. There's been a consistent growth in English language proficiency, and there has been improved program design and structures, including sheltered instruction, high intensity, and dual-language academy. Some things we need to continue to do is continue professional development, create some additional after-school programs, continue with the ESL summer program, increase our research strategies and resources, increase our staffing as necessary, and continue our ESL community and outreach support. On to our results for secondary in terms of NJSLA and NJGPA. We can see that our students have increased in number when taking our tests, including in science. Achievement stayed steady in grade six through eight and dipped slightly in grade nine. In terms of subgroups, there was an increase in two of the subgroups. And an increase in 504 and students counted as special education. In mathematics, we are super proud of our increase in geometry and algebra II at the high school level. Achievement increased or stayed flat for most of the subgroups this year, but happily increased for every programmatic subgroup. In science, there was an increase in our grade 11 achievement scores, an increase in five of six subgroups. And an increase across all program subgroups. Continued needs and next steps include small group instruction, targeted interventions for Tier Two and Tier Three, and teaching, critical thinking, and problem solving, as well as emotional intelligence, according to the district's strategic plan. For the NJGPA, class of 2026 and some 2025 students were required to take it last spring. It is aligned to New Jersey standards for ELA 10 and Algebra and Geometry. It can be used as a graduation pathway. There was an increase in the difference from 2324 to 2425 in students that were graduation-ready. There was an increase in two of five of our subgroups. And an increase or flat in four of five subgroups for math. For ELA programmatically, there was an increase for free and reduced lunch students, Section 504, and special education. And for math, there was an increase in students housed under the classification of special education, free and reduced lunch, and 504. Needs and next steps include personalizing curriculum and instruction through program pathways and proficiencies. Last but not least is our DLM testing results. This is administered in grades three through eight and grade 11 specifically for students who have significant cognitive disabilities. It requires extensive individualized instruction and has four achievement levels. In Edison Township Public Schools, we have stayed flat over the last three years. In response to this information, we plan to continue training and developing staff administration of the individualized dynamic learning map assessment. Thank you again for allowing us the time to present to you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Looks like overall, the trend is going up.
It is.
Yes.
And we're very proud of our science in elementary. We actually rose at double the rate of growth of the state. And as you see across the board, I think another highlight is our 504 and special education students who are showing growth across the board.
The presentation went pretty quickly, so if we can get a copy?
Absolutely.
We're going to put it on the website as well.
Yeah, okay.
So for the board's purposes, Mr. Shi, if I may, this presentation will not only be memorialized on the website, but information and related data will also be available. And if the board has any further questions, I would like us to dive deeper. Obviously, we are at your disposal.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job. So President's Report. We had a very good PTA/PTO meeting yesterday, great attendance. I also heard we have a ribbon cutting for the Edison High Fitness Court. Edison School District is the only school district that received that grant. So the JP Stevens Fitness Court is almost done?
It is, I believe, completed as of Friday, and we are coordinating that grand opening, I believe, in the middle of November. I think the date was November 14th.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, JP is also done. All right, I see a hand there. Folks can go out and start to work it out, right? It's open to the community, no offense, no nothing, just take it easy, right? With that said, Dr. Alderelli.
Thank you very much, Board President Shi. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board of Education. I'd like to kick off by celebrating this beautiful building and the structure that we're currently in right now here at the JP Stevens Auditorium. Special thanks to the Board of Education in relationship to not only its vision and funding these components, but the commitment to ensuring that our strategic plan is enacted. Special thanks also to Mr. Toth, as well as Mr. Colibus and his entire team for spearheading these pieces as well, too. These are daunting tasks. We have a lot of construction that's currently going on. Hundreds of millions of dollars have been done by these gentlemen and their teams. Greatly appreciated. We also had a celebration of our groundbreaking ceremony for John Marshall, which is underway right now. We are moving right along as we are in relationship to its schedule. Mr. Shi mentioned the fitness courts. We actually had the opening at Edison High School today, Fitness Court. It is the only fitness court in New Jersey at a high school. We are the only two high schools to have these types of fitness courts, and they are not only going to be open to our students for classes and before and after school, but also open... Good? Also open for our staff as well. And we are extremely proud of not only the commitment to this, but it was partially grant-funded as well, along with Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield. Special thanks to Mr. DeCoco as well for taking the reins and spearheading these beautiful courts. If you have an opportunity, please swing by and check them both out. Mr. Shi, we did have a great PTO leadership meeting yesterday, just a great opportunity for all of the PTOs and the PTAs throughout the school district to get together, share ideas, talk about things that work, talk about challenges. We're looking to have a follow-up meeting in January for further collaboration, but an extremely productive meeting, at which we also talked a little bit about our education foundation for those of you that are interested. We have information on our website, applications for our initial trustees. We are most likely going to hold this application process open for the next couple of weeks and close it, and then look to vet trustees moving forward. On the agenda this evening as well, Mr. Shi, we have the board's acceptance of our pre-K grant, which was awarded to the Edison Township Public Schools. Special thanks to Dr. Tuie, Ms. Netzel, and their entire team in relationship to this. Greatly appreciated, and looking forward to rolling out universal pre-K to the community members here in Edison Township. Always a great time in school is Halloween, right? As an elementary principal, I remember dressing up as, I was like a superhero principal, so I dressed up as Batman one year, Superman, and then I would just rotate those two exact costumes each and every single year. But I know it's a special time in school at elementary, middle, and high school. Wishing everybody a happy Halloween, and please make sure you are safe. Teachers' Convention is coming up in the, actually, next week, Thursday and Friday of next week. We are celebrating Veterans Day on the 11th. Special thanks to all of those veterans that have served our country. Last but not least, we have the end of the marking period, which I believe is November 14th coming up, and we have hit the first two months of school with a bang. Greatly appreciated for the support of the administrative team, the teachers, and all of our support staff. And that concludes my report today. Mr. Shi.
Thank you. Now we have the two student representatives. So who wants to go first, Edison High or JP? All right, Edison High? Okay, Ms. Levin.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, administrators, faculty, and community members. My name is Levin, and I'm honored to be here tonight to share a rundown of the incredible month we had at Edison High School. To kick off October, we held our annual pep rally, and it was amazing. Our bleachers were completely full of freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors who all came together to show true Ed Eagles pride. Students enjoyed games like soca senior, soca teacher, relay competitions, and outstanding performances for our marching band and cheer team. We even celebrated our homecoming court with a walk across the track, and the spirit of energy and energy was truly unmatched. The following evening was our homecoming dance themed a night in New York, where we were thrilled to see such a strong turnout. I, alongside Rudra Nandini Salina and our board advisors, Ms. Fettowitz and Ms. Fandy Wettering, worked together to create a memorable event for the entire school. Students enjoyed great music, delicious pizza, and fabulous outfits, because everyone truly came dressed to impress. We also crowned our 2025 Homecoming King and Queen, Robert Roma and Sahisha Frazar, who received overwhelming support through student votes. In the Performing Arts, our choir pastor and performance night was another wonderful success, and guests enjoyed party pasta while listening to our talented choir perform. Our theater department also took the spotlight this month, and with their fall production, Bad Auditions by Bad Actors, and the auditorium once again was filled with applause and excitement. We also had student-led movie night hosted by the class 26th and 27th, and we also have more opportunities from the school community to connect and have fun. Academically, October has been really eventful. Our sophomores and juniors completed the PSAT on October 15th, and we had our virtual parent night for ninth and 12th graders the following evening. This week, October 30th, we have proudly to announce our new inductees for the World Language Honor Society here at EHS, and we're congratulating all students for receiving an incredible honor. Athletics have also been a strong month. Our girls volleyball team celebrated senior night with a thrilling two-to-one victory against JFK. And just yesterday, our girls volleyball team organized a pink-out game for breast cancer awareness and won their match against Union High School. During the cross-country GMC championships this past Saturday, we want to recognize Bryce Hickerson, who placed 13th, Nico Schneeder, who placed 18th, and Annalise Dantez, who finished 15th overall for girls division. We're all proud of our athletes for the dedication and heart throughout the fall season. And in the ending October, on a festive note, with our Halloween costume contest this Friday, staff and students will be dressing up and showcasing their creativity for a fun prize. Overall, October has been an exciting and unforgettable month full of academic achievements, success, athletics, and school spirit. Edison High School continues to shine through a community where students support, celebrate, and grow with one another. And on behalf of Student Council, we thank you all for your continuous support. It has truly been an amazing month, and as always, Go Eagles! Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right, JP. Ms. Sharma.
Good evening, members of the Board, Administration, and Community. My name is Anuja, and I'm excited to share a brief recap of all of the wonderful things that took place at JP Stevens throughout the month of October. We kicked off the month with one of our most anticipated events of the year, the homecoming dance. This year's theme was the Great Gatsby, and students came together for a night of school spirit, music, and dancing. That very same Friday, our community came alive again for the Fall Pep Rally, where we recognized and celebrated all of our fall sports teams and their accomplishments so far this season. Several of our athletic programs also honored their seniors this month. Volleyball, boys soccer, and cheerleading each held heartfelt senior nights, celebrating the hard work and dedication of their graduating players. Girls soccer will celebrate theirs in coming days on October 30th, and our boys soccer team continues their season with an upcoming game also on October 30th. We wish them the best of luck as they finish strong. Outside of athletics, our clubs have also been busy spreading school spirit and community engagement. The Hindu Clubs hosted a beautiful Diwali celebration last Thursday, bringing together students to share culture and light, and FCCLA launched its annual food drive, encouraging students to give back to those in need. Got Your Back Club organized a fun pumpkin carving contest to help students get into the fall spirit. Finally, we are proud to recognize Mr. Makya as our October Teacher of the Month, honoring his dedication, enthusiasm, and impact on the JP community. As we move into November, we are looking forward to continuing this momentum and celebrating even more of the incredible things happening here at JP Stevens. Thank you all for your time and continued support.
Thank you, Ms. Sharma. Thank you very much. Yeah, I heard the Diwali celebration was a hit, right? More people wants to come, and we don't have tickets.
Sold out?
Yeah, right? Pays a lot of money for the PTA, that's great. All right, so you guys are dismissed. You can go home, do your homework if you want. You can sit here, enjoy the rest of the meeting, but it's on you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so move on. We'll have Dr. Alderelli and Mr. Toth review the agenda items before we open up for public comments.
Thank you, Board President Shi. Beginning with our personnel agenda, we have items for approval for the board in relationship to appointments, salary guide credits, our coaches, as well as our district-wide programs. Diving in a little bit more specifically in relationship to the administrative part of the agenda, we have our Week of Respect, which we honor each and every week as mandated by law, began October 6th through October 10th. For that Week of Respect, the resolution is located on this agenda. We have the approval of our monthly HIB report for September of 2025. A particular note here, especially for the community, if the board does approve, we are looking to change our school calendar for November 4th, 2025, in relationship to the day. We are looking for a half-day, single-session day. I usually get those terms confused and interchangeable, but I'm sure somebody will correct me at some point. This will provide, considering that most voting takes place in the afternoon, it'll provide an opportunity for us to get a full day of school in, have our students exit the building, and open it up for voting. 14 of our schools, 14 of our buildings are currently polling sites in relationship to that. We have the approval of the Edison High School Barcelona Charter School Exchange Program. I do not want to steal Mr. Ross's thunder. I know that he is going to come up and speak about that this evening, but the board has information in relationship to that on the agenda. It's a wonderful opportunity for our students. We also do have the approval of an Eagle Scout project here through Troop 2G in Edison over at JP Stevens, listed accordingly right here. The Little Free Library is a weatherproof wooden box approximately 11 inches deep here as a service project for our community, obviously with the blessing of our building principal here, Dr. Kim, along with the Board of Education approval. We have our settlement agreement as well as the attachment for our school calendar. Moving forward, we have our field trip approvals for October 2025 for the board's review. We have special pupil services here for our added district students' placements. That will conclude my portion of the agenda. Mr. Shi, I can turn it over to my counterpart, Mr. Toth.
Thank you, Dr. Alderelli. Mr. Toth.
Thank you. Up first is our financial reports, including our fixed asset report, along with our annual comprehensive maintenance plan, M1 report, and building health and facilities checklist. Up second is our contract section, very, very light. We only have one contract going out, and that's for replacement air filters for HVAC units throughout the district. Under item three, we have finally, Mr. Ross, we've heard you and your students, EHS Orchestra Project. The board heard it, we put it out. The bid's going to be awarded tonight, 3.8 million, so that's very new and exciting for your students and the programs there. So that's going to be awarded to Northeast Interiors. Item four, we have a couple project change orders. Item five is the acceptance of the pre-K grant. Great job, Dr. Tuie, Ms. Lopez, Ms. Betchy. And also the NJ Food for Waste Program. Item six, there's two transportation items, one pertaining to a revision of contract, one for the rescindment of contract.
And that's all I got. Okay, thank you. Now we're open for public comments on resolutions only. Resolutions only, anyone? Matt?
You gotta sit in the front.
Well, this used to be your home.
I know, it seems like it got bigger.
Yeah, I see big changes, right?
Yes. All right, Matt Revneck, ETA president. Two things actually, and I know I'm going to get calls tomorrow, and I'm sure payroll will as well. In the personnel, we have listed the degree differentials, but the PDIs are not there. Traditionally, they are done in October. I just looked it up on my laptop on previous year's board minutes, so I just wonder if it was an oversight, if they haven't been processed yet, because now we're talking about getting to the board now on November 25th, I believe, is the next board meeting. So if somebody has an answer for that. The second thing, I'm just listening as Dr. Alderelli, you presented, and that was for the Week of Respect. It seems after the fact that the Week of Respect is like October 6th to 10th, I believe it was. Like, maybe we should do that in the September board meeting, before rather than after? You know, just a thought. Thanks, and if you have an answer for the other issue with the PDIs, I'd appreciate it. That's why I know what to tell people when they call.
Yeah, so you can talk to Dr. Huss on that, but if it's...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Revneck. Dr. Huss will have those answers. Thank you.
If it's a contractual agreement, we'll take care of it. Anybody else? Resolutions only. Resolutions. Yes, go ahead. Is that related to resolution? You can come back later for anything else, but this is a resolution only. Okay. Sinan, can I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Who's that?
Sounds like Mr. Romano.
No, Vishal, too. It's like the same time.
I go to the run.
The one closer to you. Yeah, by seniority. Okay. Now, can I, board members, before I open up, before I call the motion on the vote, do any board members have any questions? any board members have any questions about the resolutions? I'm not going to entertain, you know, comments when the the motion's called. Any board member, any comments about any of the resolutions? Sinon? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve personnel?
I second.
Mr. Erico.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, can I have a motion to approve administration, curriculum, instruction, and pupil special services?
Motion.
I second.
Got it. Mr. Erico.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, can I have a motion to approve finance?
Motion.
I second.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're open for public comments, anything. Anyone want to go first? Public comments. You go first, you sit closest, come on. Name and address, please.
Can you guys hear me?
Mm-hmm. You good?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Ed Sofiel. I'm from the Middlesex County Union Building Trades. I was a teacher, I went to Rider College, I graduated. My father said, "You're not going to be electrician, you got to go to college." I taught for three years at Bertham Boy. I know the Toth family from Bertham Boy. I know a bunch of people, I could tell you this, that the building trades, the union-
Can I stop you one second? Excuse me. Can you stop the clock?
Excuse me?
There's, there's, forgot to stop the clock.
I can't hear you.
Go ahead. Go ahead, now you're good, now you're good, now you're good.
Excuse me. So anyway, I'm here to tell you about project labor agreements. Project labor agreements. We have a job in North Edison going on right now, where we have, we have unskilled workers, laborers, doing iron working, work tying the rods and doing work at North, in North Edison right now. Now, the public monies, public monies from the state of New Jersey requires a prevailing wage rate, because the public money, because of all our people in assembly in the state of New Jersey, realize that the building trades, all the twenty different building trades, have the best people, and that wage, that prevailing wage is determined by the best workers. So we want the best workers so that the people in the community get the best buck. Project labor agreements. The problem is that with the prevailing wage rate that we have here, we're not getting project labor agreements. In Middlesex County College right now, $350 million with people under free holders from Edison, we have project labor agreement on the job, and we had a non-union contractor come down from North Jersey, took the job, bid the job, but it was bid under a project labor agreement, and all the people come from the union halls. It's skilled people, are doing skilled work, and we're not taking people off the street because there's no project labor agreement, and pay the prevailing wage rate, and contractors that do the work without a project labor agreement, don't, don't justify the prevailing wage rate, cheat, and take people off the street, and we have unskilled workers right now in Edison doing skilled labor work. I'll move on. The problem is that you want to take a low bid. You want to take a low bid, so you're forced to take a low bid. But the answer is, simply, if you put the project labor agreement into the bid, who cares who gets the bid? You can, a low, a low bid, non-union contractor come down and take the job, but he's got to hire out of the union hall and get the best people, because that's what the state says, we want the best people on the job, union people, project labor agreement. Your answer is, put the project labor agreement into the bid. If you do that, you can have a non-union contractor take the bid, get your low bid, you'll all be happy with the low bid, but you'll get the best work. When you use a PLA, you're only going to get good and reliable contractors, and the bid, and the, and all the rules will be followed. All cities around Edison right now are using project labor agreements. If you go to the Pro Bass shop in Servile, Pro Bass shop in Servile, the Quick Checks are project labor agreement, the Pro Bass is a project labor agreement, even the gas station's a project labor agreement. Woodbridge, Carter Redd, every town in this, in this county has project labor agreements to take care of the people that live and work in this community, that live and work in this community. Not people that get hired off the street without skills, without skills, and get the job, the contractor pockets the money, and you get a crappy job. Now, with the union trades, we have safety first. We have OSHA training, we have first aid. Our kids, our guys, go to school for five years, or four years. The electricians, it's five years, the other trades is four years. I'm going to mention some of the trades that we deal with here. The plumbers, the carpenters, the rug installers, the tile people, the masons, the tapers, the painters, the glazers, deal with the glass, the insulators, the sprinkler fitters, the data techs, the iron workers, the operating engineers, the linemen, we're making $200,000 a year, by the way, $200,000 a year plus benefits. If you go on YouTube tonight, and you can look at the data techs in New York City, right now, if you go on YouTube, you'll see that they're making $61 an hour and $60 benefits. All our people are making over $100 packages, to walk at home with a million dollars in annuities, to walk at home with two pensions and a vacation fund, and a medical plan to cover us for life. I'm covered for life, a medical plan. It's unbelievable. Everybody can't be a school teacher, can't sit up here and get these honors, can't be a doctor, can't be a cop. Come to us. Come to us. You know the building trades, come to us, and we'll set you up, we'll have, we'll have an operation here, we'll bring all our apprentice coordinators in here, and we'll talk to your kids, and we'll get them in. Come to us. Don't hire these people without project labor agreements, they're going to rip everybody off. What else do you, you got a question for me? Is anybody going to question me? No questions? Okay. Okay, our training, we got a five-year apprenticeship training with the electricians. I'll use the electricians, for example. They go, they got to work on the job for 8,000 hours, they got to go to school five years. We make them go to school at night, three nights a week during the regular school year for everybody. Three nights a week, they go three hours a night. When you go to Middlesex County College, you go to Trenton State College, you go one hour, maybe once or twice a week. We make our guys go three hours every night for three nights a week. Plus the eight, go ahead.
Thirty-second morning.
See?
Thirty-second.
Okay. I'm trying to sell the program to you guys. Go with the union, guys, because we're going to take care of us. We need you, we need, you know, you need us. I'm saying, we need you. Did I make my point?
Yes, you did, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I just want to let you know that starting, you know, next year, we're having fourteen, we call it career pathways. They're basically all different trades that we're going to teach our students, and we would love to work with the, you know, your unit, to, you know, see what you can do to help our students, to get them, you know, familiarized, you know, what they're going to expect in down the road. So if you don't mind, leave your contact to Dr. Huss, we'd be more than happy.
And John goes to Redd.
Yes, yes, he, yes. Okay, thank you very much. All right, anybody else? Yeah, give your, give your contact to Dr. Huss over there, okay? Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Priyank Goyal. I came in the last meeting on 9:30, it's pretty much my, with a similar issue. I'll just give us some background around why I was there in the last meeting. The background is parents from Mount Pleasant, Fairmount, and I live in Fairmount Avenue, by the way, just near to, this is school. Parents from Mount Pleasant and Fairmount area have requested to reinstate a previous bus stop at the Fairmount and Mount Pleasant intersection for MD, Bus MD4. The stop previously existed and was convenient for families, especially during winter months. Current assigned stop is significantly farther for smaller kids, causing safety and accessibility concerns. There are five elementary-aged students who would directly benefit from restoring this stop. The parents' rationale is the request stop is on existing bus route, so no deviation, no bus route deviation required. Adding the stop would add less than a minute to total travel time. Reduced crowding at the next stop could offset any time impact. The stop previously operated without issue and served the same families, and this request represents multiple families and not an individual exception. I got a, we got a district response from the Transportation Department who denied the request. The Board of Education referred to us to the Transportation Department, and we got a response from Dr. Huss as well, who reviewed the case and concluded that the current bus stop complies with the board policy and state regulations, and policy have been reviewed fair and consistent. Therefore, no additional stop will be added, and the matter is considered closed. And the reason I'm here is, I just want the board to quickly consider these points that we, as parents, believe the existing policy fails to account for safety and convenience factor for young children and winter conditions, especially for smaller kids. And there are five total number of kids who are there. Our request to the Board of Education to revisit these guidelines to allow reasonable flexibility, especially when the proposed stop lies directly on the route, there are multiple students affected, and the impact on the route time is minimal. So I would request the board to kindly consider.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What is the current stop?
The current stop is at-
Because my, my home is around the area, so-
Janaina and Orton Street. I brought the map, I didn't brought it last time.
No, I know where it is, I know where it is. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and the previous, the previous stop was Mount Pleasant and Fairmount, and right now, because-
It just went down a little bit, right?
Yeah, and the earlier stop was on the, before this one, the stop is on Lucil Court, and Lucil Court, and then it goes to, directly to Norton, passing by the Fairmount and Mount Pleasant.
Yeah.
There are, there are five kids who, who are, who are looking for that stop, and we, and it is directly on the bus stop, like, clearly on that bus line. Request to reconsider.
All right, I got you, thank you very much. Thank you. Yep. Hey, anybody else? Sit in the front, you do your, your steps, you do your steps.
He needs to exercise.
And Matt Revneck, ETA president. Number one, first of all, we had our trunk or treat last weekend, and another huge success. I did want to shout out to a few groups that were there, besides our teachers, a club from-
JP Stevens, which is always there, our student council volunteer.
But I also want to shout out some of the community groups. We had our fire department, had a fire truck, we had our first aid squad, or EMT, we also had the bookmobile, we have the herpes dogs come out. Also, this year, for the first time, we had North Edison Baseball Softball Organization. It was really a nice event, it was a nice warm day. We went through more boxes, I think, than ever before, we went through eighty-eight boxes, and so that's, I think, the most we ever distributed. Again, thank you, another success. Second thing I want to just mention, we have a big election coming up next. Governor race, state legislator is up for election, we have the mayor of Edison, we have Board of Ed seats. All have a direct impact on our school system. I spoke back in the spring about the cuts for federal funding, but it's only a small portion, as you know, of our budget, is federal. Our funding from the state, depending who gets elected, can be drastically impacted. As an educator, we know what can happen to us, because most of the things that we do as educators are by legislation, our pensions, our health benefits, et cetera, et cetera. So I do encourage, I don't tell people who to vote for, stay informed, but please exercise your right to vote. I cannot stand when something happens and 20% of the population vote, and they think that's a mandate. 80% of the people vote, and it goes a certain way, hey, I can't argue with those results. The 20% of the people that show up is not a mandate for anything. All have an impact of what us as a district, and obviously, I am pushing education people because-
We're here for education. I know there's a lot of other issues to people-
Vote on, but we are here as educators, and to me, the most important thing that we can do is support our education system, our children, our staff, and all stakeholders involved to keep Edison one of the top school districts in the state. Please do get out and vote. Third thing, I have my little list of things coming up in November I want to share.
The list?
In November, there are, there are three. November 3rd to 7th is National School Psychologist Week. Especially in a time now, where we constantly hear and talk about social-emotional aspect, I think it's important to recognize our, our school psychologists, really deal and try to help those students along. November 17th to 21st is actually American Education Week. And finally, on November 19th is National ESP Day. For those of you that don't know, that's all education support professionals. Non-teachers, basically, on our non-certified groups, but it recognizes everybody else in every other group, even though some of have individual, you know-
............ Thank you again to those groups for everything, for our students, our staff, and for those days of-
Get out.
At Happy Halloween to everybody, and, you know, get out there and say, hey.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, definitely go out and vote. It doesn't matter who you vote for, you know, exercise your right. And in a lot of countries, you can't even do that. So it's very special in this country that you can go out and vote, and, you know, just vote, it's take literally five minutes. Okay, so, Mr. Ross, I saw you came over, so put the hat, hard hat on, and you can take whatever you want. Stop the time.
There he is.
Stop the time. Don't run the time, let him speak.
Good evening, Charles Ross, Principal, Edison High School, 50 Boulevard of the Eagles. I got the hard hat on, because, you know, our union friends will tell us that we always have to have the proper protection equipment while we're on a construction site, and we're so happy at Edison High, and I mean, we're here, we're seeing all the things that have been built. It's my first time walking into this brand-new auditorium. Dr. Kim has showed me her fantastic new wing, all of the other different types of upgrades that are going on. I can't wait for next month, when we have the board meeting at Edison High, and everybody can see the brand-new lobby, all of the different things that we have, the improved signage, just so much of the HVAC work, so much of the safety work that's going on behind the scenes, Mr. Kolobots, Mr. Murphy, everybody, the Board of Ed. But I have to thank you, the, you know, and the fitness court, everybody's talking about the fitness court, but we not only have a fitness court, we have the fitness court and a fitness studio on the other side, so we can have almost sixty students at a time accessing this. And again, like you said, this can be accessed by the community, but community members, please don't come by during school hours, because the kids are going to be out there using that. I appreciate that. Same thing for the track. So I just wanted to say that, but getting the orchestra room is a game changer. Our orchestra originally used to have to share space, and we gave them an old room that was only about twenty feet wide, and the students had to be so careful when they're working on their violins, and they had to find places to go to practice. Now, this is just another example of how this Board of Education is not only supporting the higher academic curriculum, but one of those pillars of Edison that's been for years, which is the arts. It's extremely moving to me that you guys care enough to dedicate these resources to having this type of a space where, just like this auditorium, just like the additions to the orchestra room here, but to have it at Edison High School, and the work that you're doing in the band room. I thank you from my heart and from my students' hearts, and when you come by to see Edison, you're going to see some of those great things. So I thank you for all the construction, the building that's been going on. A couple other things that we've got going on. Que es lo mejor de Edison High School? Gracias por todos su hacer, to get us to go on this exchange trip. Gracias por todos su hacen, to get us to go on this exchange trip. We talk about all of these strategic plans and everything, but sometimes Edison is like a microcosm of our twenty-first century world, but sometimes our kids just get, like, stuck within these three codes. But finding a way and being open to do some things, to bring people in from other places, to allow our students to go out, I appreciate that. Also for the opportunities, because it widens our students, it makes them ready for what's next in their lives. And the last thing that I want to talk about today is, we have a young man, tomorrow we have a football game, it's kind of a consolation game, but we're going to be playing Watch Young Hills at six o'clock, and we, the ladies soccer team will be playing for the Invitational Tournament Final at Piscataway at five. But the reason why I bring up the football team, otherwise for wanting to get people to come out and support the Eagles, is that we have a young man who's just been named a one-of-eleven finalist for the heart of a giant. Victor Flores is a sophomore in our school, and for the past six years or so, he's been, he's been battling cancer. And there's a lot of stuff that people have seen on the patch, or some of the other things. I know a couple of the, the people have reposted this, but he's just been named a finalist, so he's going to be one of eleven finalists, and there's going to be a grant back to the school, there'll be a big event held down at the end zone, the Giants stadium, and it's really kind of goes full circle, because the coach for Watch Young Hills is Rich Seibert, who was the heart of the Giants' offensive line during their last couple of Super Bowl runs, and actually has visited, has visited Edison High School to advocate for organ donation while he was a player. So it's an example of people, how we are giving back to the community. Same thing with the fitness court, we bring community into the schools, schools into the community. I think it's a great day for Edison today, the things that we're doing, buildings, and thank you again for our support.
Thank you, Charlie. So you asked last year, we'll put in the budget this year. You, you get the, the orchestra room. So, and the other thing we, we owe you is the cabinet in the, in the band room, okay? You, you submit the proposals already? Okay, all right. We'll, we'll get to that, okay? And yeah, I can't wait to go to Edison High next, next month, to have the meeting there. Gorgeous work by the facility people, you know, the, the new security office with proof doors and vestibule, and, you know, the hallway, the display cabinet, and I, I like the color of the cafeteria, it's very modern, so, you know. Thank you for the hard work, and thank you for the board to support the budget this year to get that done. And I can't wait to, to the ribbon cutting for the orchestra room. Hey, so other public comments? Yeah, Brian.
Brian Rivera, Edison. Been a while, I apologize, I've been busy, this new job has been... I have two questions, and I was hoping...
Can you get closer to the phone?
I just have two questions. Can you explain what Edison's policy regarding campaigning on school property is? Is there a difference if the property is being rented by an outside organization? Additionally, can a board member use their position to direct a school employee to carry out tasks on their... Questions, one, regards to that policy. Question number two, also, can you please elaborate on a policy or ethical guidelines regarding board members' use of social networks? Specifically, what limitations or expectations exist when posting about school matters, staff, students, or ongoing board business on personnel or campaign-related social media? You have both those policies, so I just wanted you to elaborate on them, so you could explain publicly and the rest of the board as well.
Do you have any other questions? Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I do not have the policies you're, the policies you're referencing in front of me at the moment, but in terms of the campaigning, that would strictly be, you know, staff members should not be campaigning for a particular candidate. You can encourage people to vote, but there should be no influence one way or another. If the building is rented out at a different time, and the students are out on campus, and that is, that would have to be something, we'd have to know exactly what the restrictions and the reason for them being there. That question I cannot answer off the top of my head. Each reason it might be rented may have a different result. But teachers should not be, or staff members should not be campaigning or influencing students towards a certain candidate, and that even includes board members as well.
There, there's no back and forth.
Yeah.
No, no back and forth, you know the drill.
Like a rebuttal list, right?
Let's, let's, okay, let's get somebody else. Any, anybody else that wants to, to comment? The first timer? Excuse me, through me, through the, through the chair. Through the chair, through the chair, through the chair, okay? Any other, other first timers? You want to come? You come.
Hi there, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Briar Havik, resident of a local town. I just...
Which town are you from? I'm sorry?
Sorry, I'm from Highland Park, but I do have a question, because I think it's important to any board. Going into November, many families will not have their SNAP funds dispersed. Does the Board of Ed or any educational governing bodies have plans to try and address or mitigate this hardship to the families?
Okay, any other questions?
That's all.
Okay. So my understanding, the SNAP, you know, payment is due to the government shutdown, it's a temporary thing, but for our school, we have a student no hunger policy. So anyone that, if you cannot pay, you forgot your, your, your lunch money, or if you're short of the lunch money in your account, you can get a regular meal. So, you know, it should not impact our students' lunch program. So, Dr. Aravri, you want to, anything else you want to?
No, you, you referenced that well, I echo the sentiments of Mr. She.
Thank you. All right, Brian can come for a second time. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, sorry, yeah. Sorry.
Sonda Edwards, fourteen Melbourne, Edison, New Jersey. I just wanted to say, if you guys, when you're talking, if you can get close to the microphone, it would really help us to be able to hear, because we're very interested in hearing everything that everyone has to say, and it's been very difficult, but it seems like the closer you get to the microphone, the easier it is for us to understand. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Brian. Any other first timers? Any other? Okay.
So I apologize, but he was asking me questions back and forth, that's why I asked.
Through the chair, please.
I'll be back to you, sir. My concern is that we have these policies in place.
Yeah, I apologize, sorry, I was trying to hear. Trying to hear you.
So, my understanding is we have these policies in place, but a majority of these people don't follow these policies. So I read the policies, I was waiting for an answer, and that's why I specifically asked them. So my question is, is there a way that policies specifically affect board members, is there going to be some type of training? School boards isn't really working, because people continuously do what they want to do anyway. So if a policy is violated, how do we go about fixing it or addressing that issue?
Any other questions? That's it? Okay. All right, so you can sit down, he'll answer it.
Yeah, violations of policies would be taken, policy, any violation of policy would be, have to be taken up with the superintendent, and the superintendent would have to make a decision, and/or if it should be necessary, involve the board, and they would take a vote, and that's, you know, how we do it here in New Jersey for post-schools. But you'd have to alert the superintendent of any policy that you feel is violated, and you'd go from there.
Thank you very much. Eddie, we'll talk soon.
Thank you. And also, you, you know that, you're a board member, you know that, there's also a school ethics board. You can feel free to, if you think someone violated the ethics, file ethic charges. Excuse me. All right, so any other public comments?
Motion to close public comment.
Have a second?
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, board member comments. Any board members?
Mr. She.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm a little confused. A project labor agreement and prevailing wage, I believe they're two separate things. Project labor agreement means that, well, there's a labor agreement for a particular thing that's happening. Prevailing wage, not for nothing, are we sure that the people that are doing the job, are they paid with benefits? Is there overtime? Is there a mechanism that this body, the superintendent, the BA, is there a mechanism to make sure that there's a PLA, or if we pay prevailing wage, the prevailing wage actually takes and dictates pension, sick days, that type of information?
Thank you. That's it? Hey, John, you want to?
Get an answer.
You want to?
Right, so when it comes to the, our, our projects, whether they're governed by a project or labor agreement or not, we're required to pay prevailing wage, right? That's what our general contractors are supposed to be charging, right, for their labor, and then their subs, so on and so forth. Now, we pay based on a AIA document, which is a certified pay application certified by an architect, construction manager, along with notary, and there's varying supporting documents that come with that certified payroll, so on and so forth. Other than receiving those documents, I have no way of auditing them to see who's paid what after the general contractor's paid. That's, that's something that the Department of Labor gets into.
Thank you.
Mr. She.
Yes.
Has there been, has there been any inconsistencies with prevailing wage? Just asking.
Yeah. I didn't know if you finished your, your question or not, so, that's why, yeah, go ahead.
Sure. To my knowledge, Mr. Armando, I, I really can't comment. The Department of Labor has come out, right, to review varying pay applications along with their supporting documentation. If there is an inconsistency, that's on the responsibility of the contractor. That's not our responsibility. If we weren't provided with the appropriate paperwork, I know that in, when the Board of Ed and the administration, we comply with all the laws that were required to under public contracts law and construction.
So, Mr. Armando, you're on the library board. You know, recently, the state ordered the stop work for the North Edison Library is because of payment.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, you know, we haven't, excuse, let, let me finish.
I am not on the library board, I am a representative.
Let me finish, let me finish.
Please.
Let me finish, okay? So, we have never had that incidence in, in Edison in the past couple of years, or even before, when we built many, many buildings, but, you know, the library board is an example that, not, not library board, the North Edison Library Construction is an example that, that, you know, the, the contractor or subcontractor had, you know, did something. I don't know the details, but all I know is, is the work has stopped, right? So, that's my comment. So I'll talk to Eddie, you know, afterwards, yeah. Any other board member, yeah, go ahead.
Can I?
Yeah.
Sorry. First of all, I represent the superintendent at the library board, I am not a library board member, number one. Number two, I do know, do not know the particulars of the jo, the jobs stop order, but to be honest with you, I would like to take and understand that the difference between prevailing wage and a project labor, labor agreement. Now, I really would like to know the people that are subcontractors that are being paid prevailing wage, but also taking out benefits for them. See, because, only my opinion. My opinion, we have something called eleven ninety-seven, they're the firemen, they're Local seventy-five is the Edison police officers. We have something, it's, I guess it's called the ET EA. To be perfectly honest, I would really like to see a project labor agreement, or explanations to if we pay prevailing wage, are they paying, the subcontractors, are they paying all of the benefits that a union person would get? That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for, you know, anything else, just making a statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I would, I would just like, like to say, in terms of the, the documentation that we receive, right, from all of our general contractors, all of our pay applications, you know, that, that type of stuff is, is listed in there by varying trade, right? So the, the hourly wage per, the prevailing wage chart in the state of New Jersey, along with the benefit component of that as well. However, after we make payment to the general contractor, right, who is the overseer of the job, of all the different trades and subcontractors, we're required to pay them, there is no mechanism for us to audit beyond that, and that's not the Board of Education's role, that's the Department of Labor's role.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. She.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to let everyone know that the construction of this auditorium, this beautiful auditorium that we're sitting in right now, and the construction of the new wing of JP Stevens right in the back, all done by the union. Can you contest that? Thank you very much.
So is John Marshall.
John Marshall's coming up, yeah, I'm saying, the work has already done.
And has a PLA.
That has a PLA, yes. Thirty, thirty million dollar project. We want our local people to come in and work with us, and I'm all for it, right? Okay, so any other, other board member comments? Yeah, Ginny?
Real quick, I just wanted to let you know that I did go to the play at Edison High School on Friday, and it was so good. You know, if you ever get the opportunity to attend these, these kids do the most amazing job. So, you know, please try to make it when, when they do have them. In addition to that, last night I did attend the PTO, PTA meeting that we had at the Ed Center. It was a wonderful exchange of ideas, everybody was just so, you know, so interested, and, you know, they're, just were so giving. And again, I would just like to say thank you to all of these PTOs and PTA members for all the hard work and all the time that they put in to support their schools and their buildings and us. You know, they, you know, it's just really, really a wonderful thing. But, and I also went today to Edison High again for the Fitness Center, and that is incredible. If you get the opportunity, please stop by and take a look. Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Mr. She. Okay, can you guys hear me in the back?
Yes, you're good.
Okay. Well, I, I want to share a success story about the student internship program. Addi.ai, it's a fintech company, who originally planned to take two high school interns from our school district, but after seeing how well-prepared our students are, and how easy it was for them to work with our district, they ended up selecting five students, and the internship for the five students started last week. And, and I want to recognize three people in making this happen. Mr. Cohen and Mr. Heather Daniel came up with the most transparent and easy process for students to work with Addi.ai, and Ms. Valentine, who flawlessly executed this process, giving an amazing experience to both our students as well as Addi.ai. These are the kind of experiences and real-world training we want to grow in our school district, and I hope Ms. Valentine, in her new role, you know, establishes, I would say, ten more partnerships this year. So together, you know, we are giving an opportunity to our students to get these experiences that will shape their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Mr. She. Chair. Yeah. Yeah, I just want to echo what Ginny had said, we, the community relationship committee had a meeting with the, all the... We, the Community Relationship Committee, had a meeting with all the PTA, PTO leaders yesterday. As the chair of the committee, I do believe that it's our task to be the bridge to connect all the parts of our community, the students, the parents, our school staff. I think, you know, I do want to also say that I really appreciate what our PTA, PTO puts in to work, the hard work they put in to not bring the fun to our students, right? So their life is not just homework and study. And also, I think they play a key role to keep up our school spirit strong. So I do want to give a little shout out because I always wanted to help our PTA, PTO. For the TJ, Thomas Jefferson PTA, they are hosting a Thanksgiving bakery sale. Every information is on, all the information is on their social media. For just, I think, twenty dollars, you can get a delicious freshly-made pie ready to pick up right before Thanksgiving. So I think, you know, you can donate twenty dollars and also get to help our PTA, PTO. And so you don't have to cook for the pie. I know I'm getting a pecan pie myself. So, thank you. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Any other board members? So, yeah, I just echo Ms. Penn and Ms. White said, you know, we had a good meeting. But there's one information I wanted everyone to know, and that's what the PTO leadership said. They're volunteers. They're not getting paid, okay? Let's make it clear. All the PTO, they are all volunteers. They're not getting paid. All right, so for the record. So the thing that I have received recently is about the pre-K. And Dr. Arrely just mentioned that we received a grant from the state, one point four eight billion dollars. So a lot of parents has some detailed questions. Now, I'd like to take this opportunity, if you don't mind, Dr. Arrely, have Mr., you know, Mr. Tuie to come over and give us his version of this pre-K program.
Absolutely. Dr. Tuie, microphone?
So, Mr. Shi, thank you for the introduction and to the entire board. It's too soft all night now, blowing us out here. So to the entire board, thank you for your commitment to this program. I stood up here last year and we rejected, right? And now it's a different story. So we heard that they were awarded one point four eight three million dollars in PEA funding. That's for a total of two hundred and thirteen gen... Additionally, we have two hundred and fifty, or capacity for two hundred and fifty special education students in districts. So our program totals for this year are going to be four hundred and sixty-three, like four hundred and sixty-three three- and four-year-olds who otherwise wouldn't have a program without your support. So thank you so much. To break those numbers down a little further, on the gen ed side, eighty-seven of those students attend FDR and EELC, our in-district program. We had also placed fifty-six four-year-olds out in the community at select private licensed childcare centers. And upon award, we had seventy seats left. So my department will be putting some additional information out to our community tomorrow to additionally explain our waitlist. But the best way to think about this right now is the lottery as a whole was five hundred and fifty-nine students. And on November tenth, we're going to be able to give seventy of those students. So just really excited that last piece about November tenth, please keep in mind that most of the districts that were awarded throughout the state are looking to open up on January first. But again, with this board's support, we're going to get those additional three- and four-year-olds into classrooms one day. So really excited and big things to come. We're now locked in for the next five years to capture our entire universe. So, Mr. Shi, did I hit everything or do you want me to break it down any further?
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to echo Dr. Tuie said. It's a collaborative effort from our transportation department as well because all the pre-K kids are transported. And we actually have things in motion. And once we get the grants, we're able to quickly get these kids into the pre-K program on November tenth. So kudos to the, you know, Dr. Tuie and his departments and also transportation to get things lined up.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
I remember years ago, we were talking about full-day kindergarten and how that was going to be like, it was a dream. But to be honest with you, this pre-K program, that's like going over the top. Thank you. Thank you to the state. Thank you for their teachers. Now, I got to be honest with you, you know, the district does really well, but without, without the teachers and without the supervisors, this is done, they do it for us. Our pre-K kids, they get a head start. They get a head start on kindergarten. And that head start helps them as they progress into the school system. So, Mr. Tuie, thank you. You've done more.
One thing really quick, Mr. Armando, just I'm taking a page out of Dr. Arrely's album.
You come to the podium.
I left one important, one important piece out. We have our director of early childhood programs, Ms. Dawn Nettle, here tonight. She's sitting behind me. She doesn't regularly come boardings. This is all her. Thank you so much.
Too far away, I can't see. I'm sorry.
Soup to nuts, she walked this thing to the finish line. So I'd be remiss if I didn't get back up here and say that. So thank...
Thank you, Mr. Tuie. No, I just wanted to elaborate. You know, faster we get our students, our early educated students into the system, they become more part of the system. So full-day kindergarten was great. This pre-K program, that's a home run. So thank you for everything that you've done. Mr. Adderely, please, thank you, bud.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
All right. So when you talk about, you know, kindergarten, let's not forget who actually started the program. That's Dr. Bragan. So he came in, and I think five years ago, we talked about the pre-K program, talked about the kindergarten program, and he implemented, you know, the next year. So I also, some good news, and Dr. Bragan just got appointed at South Brunswick to be their superintendent. So... Is he from Monmouth County? So congratulations to Dr. Bragan as well. So I hope he will watch our meeting. And, yeah, wishing him nothing but the very success at our, you know, neighboring school district. Okay? Any other board member comments? See none?
I want you to adjourn.
Okay? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned.